Anything else?
Do we want to seal any portion of this or change any of the wording? Um.
Which paragraph?
Under Ms. Moore, move to accept the appointment of OTPT and seconded by.
So it's a discussion?
Yeah, the discussion.
The discussion should either be redacted or.
It's a bit. I mean, we can make a motion to table this till non-public if you want.
Yeah, that's good.
So I'll make a motion to table, non-public session.
Oh, just hold on, I just have one more correction.
Sure.
The second paragraph there, my name needs an A on the end.
It's an A.
And I would request that the pages be numbered on these. It's a lot easier.
The last, on page one, the paragraph towards the end that talks about the appointments of volunteer coaches, Robert Bowers' name is spelled incorrectly, it's B-A-U-E-R. We have a motion by Ms. McElhenney to table these, seconded by Mr. Frida, all those in favor? Aye. Non-public session two from April 16th.
So.
So move by Mrs. Moore, seconded by Mr. Frida, discussion?
Again, do you want to table these until non-public, just to discuss what should be in here and what shouldn't?
Or whether or not we have to seal because of what is in here?
Right.
Second.
Second by, so, a motion by Ms. McElhenney, seconded by Mrs. Moore, all those in favor? Aye. Non-public session three from April 16th.
And I'll make the same motion to table till non-public.
Second.
Motion by Ms. McElhenney to table, seconded by Ms. Moore, because of contact. All those in favor? Aye. Okay. Okay, for reports, we're going to have the building principals present some information on behavior data. Mrs. Moore had asked for it to be on the agenda, and it had a conversation late last week that she probably may not be here. So I had Mrs. Moore call off the building principals.
Before you get too far ahead, there is a non-public session from April 23rd in there, in those minutes, do we need to approve those, or do we do that?
Actually, it's not on the agenda, but it is in the packet.
April 23rd?
It's in there because we need to approve it, did we do that before?
Correct. We've not done that.
Oh.
Good point.
This is the top one.
You were called, but just pointing out.
Oh, sure, yeah. Okay, so let's go back to them then.
A motion to.
Motion by.
Approve.
Mrs. Moore to approve.
Second.
Seconded by Ms. McElhenney, discussion on these? Hearing none, I'll call for a vote, all those in favor? Aye.
Mr. Frida Staines.
He wasn't here. Okay, thank you. So the behavior data discussion, I was asked to move to the next agenda.
I apologize, I can't let you know that I was coming.
That way, hopefully, we'll hear anyway. So let's go to policy. We have a lot of them.
There is a large packet. Last week, we had, or last time that we met, we talked about the graduation policies and those pieces that were around the changes that needed to be made with the, now the change in the scheduling. And there were two or three policies that were embedded in those that were brought forward, and we said, okay, we'll bring those next time. And then as I got to those policies, there's policies embedded in those, and policies embedded in those, and so this group, with one exception, are all intertwined, so that, and all but, I believe, two are required by law. So that's why you're getting them as a group, and it was tough to tease those out otherwise. For the most part, these are all boilerplate and necessary. So in more or less alphabetical order by the alphabet soup that the School Boards Association gives them, IHBAA evaluation requirements for children with specific learning disabilities. This updates what we have as our number 4255. There were changes made, shortening the language and cleaning it up in September of 16 with respect to legislative shifts that had been made. And so it essentially narrows it down. I've left the NHSBA note there for the board's information. That will be taken off the policy when it's published. So it's just that paragraph.
Okay.
Can I motion to accept these as a group for final read?
Sure.
You can.
Motion by Mrs. Moore to accept all policies on the agenda as a group for final reads.
Except for, except for policy four, 10. Forty-one, ten. That's later in another discussion, that's not part of this. Okay, all right.
Seconded by Mr. Frida. I'm not sure I just followed what you just said about this particular policy.
Okay, this policy.
And how come, because if I remember correctly, the legislation was extending the amount of days.
Right.
That school districts have after a request for testing.
This policy is referenced in the policy that says if you do an alternative plan for students, you need to make sure that you follow anything that's required here.
Okay.
And so that's why it's here, as we need to update ours, because that's referenced here, and the letters don't match, and therefore, so it's following that trail from this one mentions, this one mentions, this one, that's in three of those, and back over. So that's why. We have this in place, this tightens up the language, and simply says, "Follow the rules, folks," pretty much. So. Any questions on IHBAA?
No.
Okay.
Does anybody have a discussion on any particular policies?
I did not.
No, I would just inform the board members that on on the committee, we did extensive discussions and research to look at all those cross-references, and even though there's a lot here, we thought it was necessary, as Ruth Ellen said, to get them all in place right away so that we were covered.
Great. Can I ask about the early graduation policy?
Yes, we have that in place. This is because it's, we didn't have it as IKFA, we had it as the number that we have.
Right.
And so this puts the coding that is referenced in the other policy that matches that, again, it's updating the coding to match the School Boards Association coding alphabet soup.
The policy didn't change.
It doesn't really change what's in there as far as content.
The other, when you say the other policy.
Okay, so for instance, extended learning opportunities references IMBC, ILBAA, ILBA, and so those three tie into this one, it also references IKF, IHBI. So that's why all of these are tied back into, because there's references tied to.
Does, okay, so is there somewhere else in regards to early graduation that talks about the student meeting with the board?
We can certainly add that. That's something that, that I know that this board has talked about, we can add that to this policy, yes.
Well, that's currently what we do. Would that be considered a policy or procedure, though?
Well, it's, it's been procedure.
Yeah.
You know, I, I personally like it, I think it's important to, rather than just ship them out the door, I think it's important to, and I'm not necessarily looking for the board to have the final say on it, I mean, if the high school principal recommends it, and the superintendent collectively agrees, I just think it's, I think it's important for the school board to acknowledge the effort that it took to do that, to find out maybe what their future plans are. It's happened quite frequently in the last few years, and, and I would just hate to have them go without us having some type of acknowledgement of meeting, brief meeting with them.
So before final approval is granted, an informal meeting with the school board?
How do you guys feel about that?
I'm fine with it.
Okay.
Thank you.
So that'll be amended.
Yeah. Anything else on policy?
I would like to mention under IMBD, high school credit for grade, seventh, eighth grade coursework, that is required by law, that's not something that we have had in place in the past, so that will be a change moving forward. And what that does is as long as the coursework that has been completed by the seventh and eighth grader meets all of the same competency requirements that the high school coursework would meet, that credit would be granted, but it must be identical requirements. If, if there's a performance task at the high school level, the middle school or must perform the same, same or like task to meet that competency, so.
Would they be getting the competency for the, the work at the seventh and eighth grade level and at the high school?
It would appear on the high school transcript, they would get, they would get high school, well, the credit for graduation, they could start earning graduation credits as seventh and eighth graders if they're doing like work.
So, but it would be in addition to their already course load at the middle school? Or are you saying, so if they've already finished algebra and they opt for algebra two, or?
Or if I have a student who takes an equivalent algebra class and meets the high school algebra competencies, then Algebra I can appear on that high school transcript as having been taken in eighth grade, with the math credit there. But remember that graduation requirements say that students have to have a math intensive all four years, they have to have an English class all four years, so it's not that they get to opt out, but they get it recognized that they've done this and are moving forward.
So they'd still need an additional four credits in math, if math was where they're at.
And interestingly enough, a seventh or eighth grader has to have approval from the high school principal.
Yes.
I'm glad to see that that's, I like that piece of it. Okay. Any further discussion on policy?
So a question, why is the work comp temp policy in at these?
That, that one is the one that has nothing to do with the student pieces.
Right, right.
This is the one that's separate.
That's separate, so what, so the vote, the motion right now is only for the student pieces?
The first nine, perhaps.
Okay, I was just making sure.
Yes.
I couldn't figure out how it tied in.
It doesn't, thank you.
No, no, it's fine.
Okay, so we have a motion to accept all these as a final read, and I would just note.
First, yeah, first time.
I would note that IFKA has amended. Any further discussion? All those in favor? Aye. New business.
Are we going to do GB?
Oh, sorry.
It's okay. GBGD is Workers Compensation Temporary Alternative Work Program. This is essentially establishing a light duty policy if we have someone who's coming back from an injury, and enabling them to ease back in, and having a purpose, a policy and a procedure in place for that. We attached in your packet was a policy that was written for us in 2005. We also, I've, I've attached Exeter's current policy that's almost verbatim, so, I mean, it's, it's still current, it's still applicable, but it is something that we need to have in place that's going to guide where we're going. We have had to use this as procedure, I would like to have it set as policy.
Motion to accept as a final read?
Motion by Mrs. Moore to accept as a final read, seconded by Mr. Frida, further discussion? All those in favor? Aye.
Thank you.
And this policy is in here for later on?
Yes, it is. That was for reference.
New business, the award of a fitness equipment bid.
So during the, actually, prior to our starting with the budget process, last year we were discussing replacing the fitness equipment at the high school. This ties in with PE curriculum, health for sports, so I worked in conjunction with Mr. Mutcher and Ms. Peabody to generate a bid. We were quite fortunate that we, let me see, let me pull this up, we actually received bids from five companies, one company did submit two bids, which is perfectly acceptable that as long as both pieces of equip, both bids met with our commercial-grade equipment specifications. So kind of want to turn it over to Mrs. Peabody, if she would like to speak to the request to award to Precision Equipment. Just trying to find my worksheet here. Precision Equipment basically was in the, the middle of the bid price.
I read it.
And let's see. Their piece of equipment was for, for five, for four pieces of equipment with installation and shipping was $8,734. Low bidder was Total Fitness out of Bradleboro, Vermont, they were at $7,721. Precision, let's see, Gronk Fitness, Gronks was at $8,160. Precision did provide a second bid, which was $9,332. Pro Maxima out of Houston, Texas, was $10,714. And lastly, Matrix Fitness out of Cottage Grove, Wisconsin, was $12,291. Would you like to speak further to, right, only because she has so much more experience with trying to pick the appropriate?
I'm sure I have much more experience rather than just using the equipment.
But I know that, right, but I know that you would.
First, I want to thank Dr. Moore for moving this forward, I know these were discussions last year, so I appreciate you moving that forward. A lot of discussion with Tim Mutcher, to be honest with you, and he was the factor for me in deciding, in my mind, for Precision Fitness. He has a relationship with the person that we would be working with, because he works at Merrimack Valley as a coach, and they use Precision Fitness, so he's already worked with this person. They go into the school and they work with the coaches and the kids on how to use the equipment, how to care for the equipment, which is a piece I really liked as well. And if there's anything wrong, they're relatively local, where they can come right here, and he can, you know, evaluate what's going on, and check things out, and fix it right away for us.
Did the other companies not offer training?
Not that I know of. Like I said, Mr. Mutcher knew this guy, and worked with him on this, and he has a very good relationship with it, with the gentleman, and was very satisfied with what he's done at Merrimack Valley with him.
Why two different bids? Is that odd?
No, it's basically because they do have quite an offering of types of equipment. I believe.
So this represents.
Right.
Two different grades.
I think one of the pieces, you know, the equipment, they go by how, how much it's used as well, and one, one of the pieces was, you know, it was great, a little bit more pricey, but it wouldn't get the, you know, the usage would be for a little bit more. I mean, we could do that, but he, he was being honest, he was like, in, in speaking, Tim spoke with him and said, "This one's fine, I know that I can get more money out of you for this one, but to be honest with you, for what you do in Farmington, this one would be satisfactory for you." So I liked, I liked that honesty as well.
And these pieces will fit in our fitness room?
Dr. Moore, I'm sure is, was part of that discussion, when she.
It's fairly small.
Yes, yeah.
If not, I'll put the treadmill in my room.
But they did, they provided, we put it into the Google Drive, they did provide a layout of where to go and actually where they would suggest putting the equipment, because yes, we did talk about that, yeah. They knew the space we had to work with.
Mr. Frida?
Did we ask for training in the RFP?
That's what I'm just double-checking, was for the review.
And that may not be the case, I just know he's worked with the gentleman in that area that.
I'm just cautious about rewarding people for doing things behind the RFP that's not asked for.
I understand that, sure.
So if we want training, we should really ask for it.
So we did, we said grand total price of all the equipment, the delivery, assembly, and installation.
And for me, it was just like the personal relationship he already has with him that Any other questions?
Other than that, are the pieces equivalent? Are they different, different pieces?
Mr. Mutcher said, yes. I mean, a leg press is pretty much a leg press, I mean, it's just more of a commercial grade, and these are commercial grade.
Football team gonna use this stuff? I don't think.
They use it now.
Working hard during the offseason. Any other questions or discussion on the?
I guess for me, for, to go forward with, with the price here, when I'd like, do we have some guarantees of training? I mean, if.
Well, as, as Mr. Frida said, that wasn't part of that, I mean, this was a little extra bonus for me, that's why I.
Right.
Was going with that. Is it that a guarantee? He does it for Merrimack Valley, so we can't imagine that it wouldn't be.
Right, but he works, he works there, though, right?
Tim does, but this gentleman doesn't.
Oh.
This gentleman's company works with Merrimack Valley, and Tim, that's what that was.
Sorry.
So that's the, how they know each other, from this equipment being at Merrimack Valley and Tim working with him, he trained Tim in the equipment and things like that.
Okay, perfect.
I'll make the motion to accept, to award the bid to Precision Fitness for their, would you say, first proposal?
The $8,734.
Yes.
Okay. We have a second. I'll second it. Any other discussion? Hearing none, we call for a vote, all those in favor? Aye. Closed. One opposed. We have a request for a memorial on one of our ball fields.
Gentlemen, I'm gonna, if you want to step to the microphone, that way the cameras can pick you up.
Make sure you state your name, guys, just for the record, okay?
All right, I'm Paul Roy.
I'm Evan Frenel.
And Paul, you're a junior here at the high school?
Yes.
I'm a junior, too.
You're a junior as well, okay.
So.
And they do have this in their packets, if that helps, okay.
I'm just gonna ask about that. So as you're all probably well aware, we did lose our good friend Chandler Peterson this past year due to a car accident.
Can you speak into the mic? Thank you.
You push it up, buddy.
Yeah, that way, yeah.
All right. So we have been talking as a team, and would like to put a mural down on the retaining wall on the field just below the driveway. I've talked extensively with Dr. Moore and Ms. Peabody about this at the high school. We have an artist to do the mural right now, but unfortunately, she could not make the meeting tonight, as she was up in Killington doing the junior fire department practice up there, so she could not be with us tonight. But Maddie Rette, a, she lives in Milton, comes here to Farmington, she's a four-year art student here at the high school, she offered to help us do the mural up on the wall. The topic of concern, I guess, from the high school was the permission to do so.
So, so tell me, this picture that we're looking at, is this, is this, this is what it will look like? This is the design?
Yes, that would be the picture that would be used of him. Evan put that up on the wall so that you could get a scale of how big we would like it to be against him.
Yeah.
So you have a student standing next to it for scale?
Yeah.
Yeah. Maddie, Maddie said that she can do this directly on the stone or over it, it doesn't matter as far as the paint, or how much it'll come off due to weather, it'll be protected from the elements.
Okay.
What I don't know is with the surface of the stone, if it might be better to have a flat surface that's superimposed on it, rather than to try to.
Yeah.
Work with the crevices of the stones.
Is there gonna be any language on it, or just a picture?
We were thinking of putting his name on there. Yeah, maybe a quote, once a tiger, always a tiger. Yeah.
It's in the works.
Yeah, we, there's a couple of different ideas bouncing around, but definitely his name and the picture of him up on the wall. Maybe the, Ms. Moore?
I was gonna motion to accept the concept, but a final drawing, come back to us when you have it.
All right. Motion by Mrs. Moore to accept the concept of the mural, seconded by Mr. Frida, further discussion?
I just have a question, have you contacted the parents to get any feedback from them?
I've not spoken in April since his wake, I know that we had been talking about it then, but it was very soon to try to reach out to talk to her.
That's a good idea.
Yeah, I think Mrs. McElhenney makes a great point that it's, it's quite appropriate now, you know, and I understand it was, it's probably still soon, but in, for her, I'm sure she's still dealing with it every day, but I think it's appropriate at this point to say, "Look, this is what we're thinking about doing, we've got initial school board approval, do we have your permission?" And it is an image of her son, so we want to get her on board. I can't imagine she'd say no, I think she'd be probably quite honored and moved. Dr. Moore, this is your recommendation?
It does.
Yes. And Mrs. Peabody, yours?
Yeah, I'd like to actually add to this, maybe on a little sidebar on, to this, if that's okay?
Can you, yeah, just so people at home can hear.
I love the concept of this, just, just a little side thing as well, though I had another request today for some type of, one of our students passed, and I know we've had quite a few students that sadly have passed that have been athletes, and people want to memorialize them in some shape, form, or fashion, or, you know, perhaps retire their jersey. I think we might want to come up with something very specific on how we do that process moving forward, you know, whether, you know, just for example, bricks or something like that, because I just think we need a very more, a formal process.
Yeah, a lot of times decisions are made very emotionally, and, you know, having been an athletic director who's had to do this, retiring the number is probably not always the smartest thing to do, because you have limited numbers you can use for jerseys.
I absolutely agree, I just, and I'm not.
And as time goes on, and new uniforms get ordered, all of a sudden, it's like, oh shoot, we just ordered a number that we retired, and you don't want to offend anybody, so the honoring of a jersey, not necessarily attached to a number, is one idea.
Correct.
Bricks, memorial bricks are another idea.
And maybe we can get a student group to, to talk about something like that, and, you know, present some ideas.
Yeah, maybe the athletic committee, something the athletic committee can talk about.
Right.
I don't think, in my recent memory, that we've lost an active member of a team. We've lost athletes who just graduated, but we've never lost an active member of a team. And this is unique, and quite, quite a gesture, and I think it's a nice thought.
These students have worked hard.
Yeah.
They have.
So.
I'm very pleased and proud of them.
You know, we want to, because it's a permanent thing, and it's a memorialization of somebody, we definitely want to get a solid plan. We need to know what it will say and all that. I know you're still tossing around some things, so that's why Mrs. Moore's motion is to move forward with the concept, but to come forward to us when it's basically about to come, become a reality, okay? Any further discussion?
The other thing that I would recommend as you finalize your plan is that, you know, let's say this is painted over. let's say this is painted over the summer, it'll look great for the football season. What's it going to look like four years from now when it's been out in the weather all winter? And so how do we, how do we put in there a type of perpetual care for the mural to make sure that it doesn't become kind of the colored blob that nobody can recognize in 10 years? So kind of, what does that look like and how do we protect it?
There's probably plenty of things we could do, especially if we, you know, put like, in on another surface, like maybe like a thing of wood over it. Like we don't have to have like the paint just bare out, you know, kind of like, you know, the face the elements. We can put maybe like some plastic stuff over it, you know, something see-through, you know, that can protect it from the elements and keep it preserved.
I know that Maddie's also mentioned using an acrylic coating over it so that the paint itself is not actually what you're seeing, you're seeing the acrylic. Yeah, all good things for you guys to discuss as you move forward with this project, but it's a great idea and I really appreciate you guys doing it. Any further discussion?
Just look into those acrylics because they also have a time limitation you have to reapply. So get that scheduled so we know when we have to paint it again.
Any further discussion? All those in favor? Aye. It's charged, guys.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Acceptance. Any other new business from the board? Okay, old business, acceptance of donation for lunch balances. Oh.
A motion to accept for discussion.
We.
Motion to accept the donation for discussion, second by Ms. McElhany. Motion was by Mrs. Moore.
We talked about it. I brought it forward and then went back and frankly, you know, I was thinking that when we had done it, we talked about $1,000 being the threshold. The policy, actually, the threshold is 500. And so you do have to formally do a motion to accept. So we want to go ahead and make sure that that's.
Because the donation was from an anonymous donor for what amount?
900.
$900 to help with delinquent accounts.
Lunch accounts, yes. And so the other piece to that is we wanted to look at some guidance around where that might be applied. And we have some ideas, but we wanted to make sure that that was in accordance with board's wishes as well.
I think I've got a little balance that needs to be.
You're mom's lunch, you didn't carry a balance.
Okay, any other discussion? We'll accept that. What's the actual amount, 900 even?
900 even.
Okay. Motion to accept the 900 donation? All those in favor? Aye.
Okay, so we have, I don't know if you want to discuss totals now or if this is something that you'd rather discuss in non-public as we look at where that might be applied.
In non-public, I would say.
I would say more public.
Okay. Any other old business from the board? Any other, other?
Were there any acknowledgements that we wanted to make?
I have a couple of questions too.
Well, ask your questions first, something.
The retirees, I had asked you a question about that.
Right, you were going to bring it up here?
Yeah.
Yeah, so go ahead.
Is there something that the school board can do to honor our long-term retirees? I know there are some things in the works at the school level, but sometimes there's plaques or something from the school board.
Certainly, since I've been here, there hasn't been a, here's what we do. I'd be happy to help set that precedent. We just need to make sure that if this is what we start, that it's something that we continue. So.
And when you say long-term, are you talking about a certain level of service?
That's what I was thinking. Or different something for each level. I know we honor them at the beginning of the school year, so.
We do service pins, but that's not necessarily upon retirement and that's not necess, that's not from the school board. So if you're looking to have something on behalf of the board, that's something we can do. It's something that isn't currently budgeted, so we also need to talk about where that might come from.
Right. But I just didn't want to see, you know, the school district doing plaques and the school board doing plaques because then they're just going to walk out with.
Plaque.
Plaque.
Yes.
So maybe something, I don't know, meaningful. I don't know what it is.
Brand new car.
Good luck with that.
Okay, is that something we can put our head together on?
We can, yes.
See what we can come up with.
On the last agenda, you had the top 10 dinner.
Yes, I have menus for you. I need your meal choices this evening, so.
The important stuff.
The important stuff, yes. One for each of you.
Did I say I could go?
Okay.
When did you?
I remembered what it was. When we went to the Lakes Region Dinner, they, which you missed.
I know. And she texted me dessert.
They did recognize a lot of students and several great students from right here in Farmington and I'd like us to do something as well, just to bring their names forward and have them receive a recognition from.
Usually chef, I forget his name, comes down and does acknowledgements at Last Chapel.
Okay.
I don't know if he does, he does usually senior acknowledgements.
And then we, Isabel is not a senior, but she is the state Hosa president. So that might be something that we would want Cheryl Kavitsky to come down and acknowledge at Last Chapel as well.
Yeah, that would be really nice.
Yeah.
If she'd be available.
But I mean, do you want to see us invite them to the school board meeting?
Whichever. I just know that it's kind of become a thing and it's kind of been a really, a kind of a positive note for the school board and I just like that.
Yeah, I, having been sick for the last meeting, I missed an invite that I wanted to extend to the young lady who represented us in the spelling competition over the team. So I've got to do that. I want to do that before the school year ends. And maybe we can do those students at the same time so I can get those, get what you want those.
Okay.
Yeah, thank you. Public participation. Quiet, nothing exciting? I can remember nights when people were pounding down the microphone trying to get up there. All right. Our next school board meeting will be June 4th. June 4th? Yes, June 4th. Monday, June 4th, right here at 6:30 PM. Thank you to those of you who came out this evening and those of you who are viewing from home. Our all entertaining motion to go into non-public session one under RSA 91A, colon 32, A, B and C for resignations and nominations. Salute by Mrs. McElhany, second by Mrs. Moore. All those in favor, by all? Aye. Good night.